Of emergency contraception for people at higher weights. Timmy Brodrick is reporting on this. Timmy is Disability in Healthcare Reporting Fellow at our editorial partner, STAT, the health and medicine publication. Timmy, good to have you back.
Great to be here, Scott.
So just to be clear, emergency contraception like Plan B is not abortion. Yeah, can you clarify the difference?
Yes, so they're doing two very different things. Abortion pills are exactly that. They are abortive measures, whereas emergency contraception just delays ovulation rates for a few days depending on which pill that you take. So you're just decreasing the likelihood of getting pregnant rather than ending a pregnancy.
All right, so let's talk about emergency contraception options. Two that are available, widely available to the public are Plan B and Ella. Those are the brand names. There is concern, and you report on this, that they're less effective for people at higher weights. And one researcher you talked to said that means Plan B may be ineffective for half the people who take it. What do we know about the research? Why might that be?
Yeah, so this stems from a report more than a decade ago that really called attention to this issue and found that Levonoregestrol, which is like what Plan B is the brand name for, that the efficacy of that kind of fell off once you pass 25 BMI, which is like, depending on how tall you are, like anywhere from 155 to like 170 pounds. And I think one thing that's important to note is like, for people who are labeled obese, who have 30 BMI, it's not like you can't take this pill. It's not like this won't work for you. It's the difference between having a 1% chance of getting pregnant and a 6% chance of getting pregnant, which is an increase for sure. But if you flip it the other way, it's like a 99% chance versus a 94% chance. So it's definitely can be effective. It's just not as effective. And I think that's the message that they learned for the first time a little over a decade ago.
And how do researchers, scientists, think about why that might be for, you know, persons with higher BMI? What might be happening in their bodies?
So this is still a really uncertain question. We don't know. The science is mixed. There's a couple ideas and the thought that, okay, the hormones might be processed differently if you have a higher BMI. But we also don't know whether that's actually true, and it could just be a matter of it being less bioavailable in some way. Maybe it's distributed farther throughout the body, so the concentration is less effective. Scientists are still trying to figure that out, which is a frustrating part for researchers in the field.
So then if a person, you know, is of a higher BMI, knows about Plan B, and is also hearing, you know, there's, it may be less effective, and wants to look for other options, are there other options out there?
Yes, so there's commonly like three types of emergency contraceptive. You have Plan B, which is over the counter and costs a little bit of money but is available in most drugstores. Ella, which is also the name of Ulopristal acetate. And that's more effective generally as a contraception option than Plan B, just period. And--
But you need a prescription for that, is that right?
Yes. Yeah, you need a prescription, but it is likely available to folks at higher weights. Again, science is still unsettled about that question. And then you also have the copper IUD, which is a nonhormonal option that's not affected by weight at all. So it's the most effective out of the three options, but it obviously does require that you get a procedure done to have it inserted into the uterus.
Yeah. And finally, just looking forward, Timmy, as far as the uncertainty in the research that you talk about, are there clinical trials? Is there more research underway now, or is it kind of challenging to get the data?
It's challenging to get the data. I mean, one, it's hard to enroll people in studies when you have Plan B available over the counter, so that the impulse to enroll in something like that is much lower. But you also have the confounding data variable of, you know, a lot of the US population is on some sort of long-term hormonal contraception, and that can affect and confound the data when you're doing a study like this to try and test the efficacy of emergency contraception for people at higher weights.
Timmy Brodrick is Disability in Healthcare Reporting Fellow at our editorial partner, STAT, the health and medicine publication. Timmy, thank you again.
Thanks so much, Scott.
Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Scott Tong in Washington DC.
And I'm Deepa Fernandez in Alameda, California. It's Here and Now.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and your NPR station and Story Worth. Each week, Story Worth emails a loved one a question about their life. After a year, they'll publish family memories into a bound book to keep forever. Learn more at storyworth.com.
On the TED Radio Hour on December 24th, NASA's Parker Solar Probe.
Board of Supervisors meeting for November the 19th, 2024. At this time, I would like to welcome the Reverend Corwin Casey and invite him to come forward to the podium. Reverend Casey, I invite you to tell us about your church and to then lead us in prayer. When Reverend Casey is ready to lead us in prayer, I invite all who so desire to stand for the prayer and to remain standing to join the board in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Reverend Casey, you have the microphone. You're facing us. Yes, sir. They're speaking to the mic there.
It's getting harder and harder.
I understand.
Who would think in this capacity of almost 45 years that you wouldn't have the scaries about you?
Just relax, you're welcome.
At least I'm not in the courtroom. My friends, I stand instead of my pastor, Dr. Dwight Steele. I heard from his secretary earlier this morning, and it doesn't matter what his situation was, it's for me to do so because I was licensed under him many years ago. All things considered, I'm honored because I'm too a resident of Roanoke County. I'm grateful to stand just for the reasons that I've been asked to serve, but I will say this, I just stepped down from my pastor in Radford of 28 years and embodatied for an additional nine years. That said, my wife said, do you get tired? I said, I absolutely get tired, but I'm looking for a reason to sit down. And the reason has to come from on high, but my wife has been so good for me in this journey that we drove to Radford for as long as we were there from Roanoke County. And we're tired, but we're not going to fall asleep. All things considered, our church, we were blessed over the years to purchase a new edifice, literally, brand new. And a lot of people give accolades to the pastors, but it takes people to get things done. And I just sat back and was blessed to watch the show happen. And now I have some freedoms with my wife and even my children. They're grown and on their own, and I got to go to North Carolina this week to watch a football game, not the University of North Carolina, but Elon College where I went to undergrad, undergrad. But all things considered, my life is probably just as boring as many other people's lives are. But all things considered, I see what you do. People, I believe, have watched to see what I have done. But it's not about me. It's all about us as a conglomerate and get these things done. At the end of the day, there really is a time where we can have a smile on our faces and look for the Mondays or the times ahead and say, let's do it again. God bless you. Thank you. If you don't mind, if this is the time to pray, I'll be honored to do that. Whatever your custom may be, let us respect one another and bow our heads together. Merciful and loving God, our Father, we give you thanks in advance. We know that tomorrow's gone. Today is a day that's still apart upon us. We pray that our hearts would be open to hear, to respond, to always respect what you do for us. We're grateful. You've done things that we don't deserve, but lest we go any farther, thankful hearts is where we are. Take over to this time of coming together, the people who have taken the time to come together, to see to it that their lives would be better places when they see tomorrow. In the name of the God that we serve, we all say together, amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Reverend.
Thank you. Thank you. The privilege has been mine.
Good afternoon. Welcome to our meeting of November 19th, 2024. Regular meetings are held at the second and fourth Tuesdays at 3:00 PM. Public hearings are held at 7:00 PM on the fourth Tuesday unless otherwise scheduled. Meetings are broadcast on RV TV Channel 3 and will be rebroadcast on Thursday at 7:00 PM and also on Sunday from 10:00 AM until 5:00 PM. Board of Supervisors meetings can also be viewed online through Roanoke County's website and www.roanokecountyva.gov. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate in or attend Board of Supervisors meetings should contact the clerk of the board at 540-772-2005 at least 48 hours in advance. Please turn all cell phones off or place them on silent. Opening ceremonies, item A, number one roll call. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Radford?
Here.
Mrs. Hooker?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Here.
Mr. North?
Here.
Item B, request to postpone, add to, or change the order of agenda items. Are there any requests to postpone, add to, or change the order of the agenda, fellow board members?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Kaywood?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I would like to recommend that we first do our closed meeting, which is item I-1, and then do the work session, item H-1, as we have some guests that will be presenting to us in close, and that way we could get to them efficiently and then handle the work session after.
Okay, thank you. Any objections to that, Board?
No, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Lubeck, any objections?
No, sir.
The amended, seeing none, then the agenda is amended as requested. Thank you. Item six, proclamations, resolutions, recognitions, and awards. Number one, recognition of the GIS department staff on winning a 2024 VACO Virginia Counties Award for the Town of Benton Stormwater Outfall Management Application. Chair recognizes Darren Jones, GIS Analyst 2, and Anita McMillan, Benton Planning Director, as well as James Hutser with Virginia Counties in Richmond, Virginia. Welcome. If you would, please come on up to the microphone. And also, I'd like to welcome from the Town of Benton Brad Gross, Mayor, Richard Pete Peters, Town Manager, Cody Sexton, Deputy Town Manager, Nathan McClung, Assistant Director Planning and Zoning, and Kenny Sled, Utility Services Manager. Darren Jones, Anita McMillan, and James Hutser, you have the microphone.
Good afternoon. Thank you again. I'm here just would like to thank you, Roanoke County GIS Department and Roanoke County. Your guys have always been really helpful, especially for our GIS needs and whenever we have requests or we have something needed for GIS, they always come through for us. I appreciate all the support from the GIS department. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Ladies and gentlemen, I just want to thank the Town of Benton for their patience and their involvement with this project. Without their encouragement, without their participation, it would not have been possible, and therefore wouldn't have got an award. So it's nice to see actually have a rather large, two organizations work together in a great team environment to put things together to actually produce a product that is actually being used and is utilized in the way it was supposed to be done.
Thank you. And Mr. Hutser?
Yeah.
What brings your business to the board?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, good evening. I'm James Hutser with the Virginia Association of Counties. I have a little speech here, but I did want to say I really appreciate your involvement, not obviously just in Roanoke County, but with all 95 Virginia counties. Your leadership within VACO on our various steering committees. Big shout out to Mr. North, who just got elected as our second Vice President. So he is in executive leadership and on the member of Board of Directors for my organization and is a fantastic representative of all 95 counties. So with that, it is my distinct privilege to present the VACO Achievement Award. For those who aren't familiar with VACO, VACO, the Virginia Association of Counties, has existed since 1934, and we serve and support your efforts as county officials in many ways. First is through our advocacy at the state and the federal level, and second is through our educational programs, member services, and communications. I'm very proud to present the award for the Town of Benton Stormwater Outfall Management Application, and I know I will be back next year because you guys keep churning out fantastic programs and you keep winning awards. And that says something because Roanoke County is the sixth most awarded county in the VACO Achievement Award program. Yes, my notes said that's true. So absolutely, well deserved, and I really, really appreciate you guys having me. So thank you.
We need to get some more awards and move up to number one, don't we? We'll have to take that as a challenge.
That's fine with me, sir.
Any board members have any comments? And Mr. Radford?
Yeah, James, I recognize you from VACO. I'm still, can't believe we got him across the threshold there at that nominating committee, but that was fantastic. And he is a great leader and look forward to things that he'll do with that. The GIS, I use that a lot in my professional business. I don't care if it's in Benton or County or whatever. It is such a help when you can bring that GIS up and see that water, stormwater, and in the sewer and where it's routed. It's just a big help for people in my profession, and I'm glad you got awarded for it. So thank you for the good work and the tool.
Anyone else on the board? No comments? Well, at this time, I'd like to ask Mayor Gross, would you or any of your other Benton leaders have a comment? Quit hiding back there, Brad.
Well, Chairman Dorff, you know that mayors always have a comment. I just want to briefly thank you, folks. I enjoy working with all of you individually, but more importantly, I certainly enjoy and appreciate the partnership that Roanoke County and Benton has. It's really has grown and blossomed in the last several years, and I think we have accomplished a lot. Today's award is just a good example of what can be accomplished when you work together. So thank you, folks, for everything that you do. Anything we can ever do, please listen up. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Anyone else want to take this time to say a few words? You're welcome to. Okay. If that, no one else has anything to say, congratulations on your award. And at this time, I'd like to invite everyone to come up in front of the dius up here for a picture. And that includes Cody Sexton and Pete Peters, too. And we may need to stand up. We'll stand up.
Yeah, we'll stand up.
At this time, I'm taller than James. Everyone say, "in Benton."
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
You, too.
See you, James. Drive safely back home. Drive safely. Congratulations to you all. Item D, first reading of ordinance, number one. Ordinance accepting and appropriating proceeds from the sale of Pogue's Mill property in the amount of $845,465. Chair recognizes and welcomes Susan Peterson, Director of Finance, Roanoke County Public Schools, for the first reading and request for a second reading. Welcome, Susan.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. On September 10th, the Division completed the sale of the Pogue Farm property and received This amount is not included in the current budget ordinance, and the school board cannot spend the proceeds until it is approved by the Board of Supervisors via ordinance. The school board approved the appropriation of the funds during their October 17th meeting to the Undesignated Special Projects line in the Major Capital Fund. On behalf of the school board, I request approval of an ordinance to increase the 2024-2025 school board budget by $845,465 and to appropriate the funds to the facility category.
Okay, thank you. At this time, is there a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance and to schedule the second reading for December 17th, 2024?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to submit for the board's consideration an amendment to the ordinance that is set out in our agenda. I've worked with the county attorney and with you, Mr. North. I think we've distributed to each board member my suggestion for an amendment. What my amendment does is it adds a recital clause, a whereas clause, to the proposed amendment. It does not change the ordinance itself. The ordinance language will remain the same. What I would like to do is to include a recital provision that attempts to suggest to our friends at the school board that they may want to be more, they may want to take a different approach with respect to the appropriation of these funds. What faces us as a Board of Supervisors is we have three options. Option number one is we do not adopt the ordinance at all, and the Board of Supervisors retains the proceeds from the sale of the property. Back about six months ago, that made a whole lot of sense to me. The reasoning is the proceeds of these funds, the proceeds, were for the sale of the Pogue's Farm property. The county is in the process of extending water and sewer down Route 221 to encompass the property and go beyond that. And in my mind, it made sense, since these sale proceeds were attached to the Pogue's Farm property, that it would make sense to pay for some of the costs of extending water and sewer lines to that property. That benefits not just the county, but I think it also benefits Roanoke County schools. If development occurs down the 221 corridor, that development provides more homes. With more homes, you have more families. With more families, you have more children. More children go to public schools, and that helps our average daily membership under the current state funding formula. But that was probably a bad idea on my part six months ago. So that leaves us with a second alternative, which is to adopt the ordinance as included in our agenda. And then that led me to my third alternative, which is trying to include a whereas clause that talks about requesting the school board to put these proceeds into the facilities category, because again, as the board knows, we only have nine categories that a governing body can appropriate to the school board. But also to indicate that in that category, it would be for undesignated special projects in the Major Capital Fund. My hope, and what I would hope our friends in the school board would hear, is that in that approach, the school board, I would hope, would take careful consideration and place these funds into the CTE Major Capital Account. In my experience, every major capital project invariably had cost overruns. I think we saw that with the third, I think, third contract for William Byrd. There was a substantial cost overrun. And so it makes sense to me and be fiscally responsible to put those dollars into the contingency account for CTE. We can't tell the school board to do that, but I would hope by my amendment, and hopefully if they're listening to this board meeting, they would take it to heart and consider putting the $845,465 into a contingency account. As I understand the math, under the current contract for CTE, the contingency account now is about a little over 1%. This would take it to a little over 2%. My experience is that in other projects, you had a 5% contingency. And that makes sense, particularly with a project of this magnitude, this size. There are a lot of unknowns to that site, and I think it would make, it would make good sense if our friends on the school board went down that path and in effect save these dollars for any contingency that would come out of the construction of the new CTE facility. And then the good part is, if those dollars are not needed for a contingency, then it is for an undesignated special projects in the Major Capital Fund. And all those terms have meanings that we understand and they understand. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully submit for the board's consideration the amendment that has been passed out to each one of you to amend the ordinance that is submitted to you today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lubeck, do you have an extra copy to share with Ms. Peterson? Good, okay, thank you. That's right, this is just the first reading. With that said, is the motion offered by Supervisor Mahoney seconded?
Second.
Is there any questions on the motion from other board members?
So, yeah, I got a question. So is this whereas clause, is this redundancy? Because it looks like we're already going to, they're going to put it in the facilities category.
category. Is it, I just don't understand whereas. What's, what does this do to it versus what we have now?
Well, Mr. Radford, what I was hoping to do with the whereas is that that would give me an opportunity to indicate my wish or my desire that the school board could consider placing these proceeds into the contingency account for CTE. But again, Board of Supervisors does not have that power to put those, to attach those strings to that kind of ordinance. So I was hoping to utilize this as a springboard to have that kind of conversation and convey at least my concerns and my wishes and my hopes that a contingency account would be beefed up by these proceeds and that those proceeds not be used for other projects until, until the school board knows where they are during the course of the CTE construction, which is what, two more, another year and a half, two years.
So it's more of a verbal
Yes.
request right now?
Yes.
And this really just says, this is the path that it's going to go in. I think they had already told us they were going to go under the Undesignated Special Projects in Major Capital Funds, correct?
Yes.
Undesignated, Undesigned Special Projects.
If I could, Mr. Chairman. So just to repeat what Mr. Mahoney has said, is that it's my understanding, and Susan, is it correct, is the contingency fund about 1%?
I don't remember the exact percent off the top, but it was very low.
So I, because I had heard at one point that it was less than 1%. And if a typical contingency fund is between 2% to 5%, to Mr. Mahoney's concern there, it's really just insurance that they're well-funded for that project. And I think it makes good sense to just say that as an admonition, it's not a mandate. And I appreciate that thoughtfulness, Mr. Mahoney. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, that's correct. Just to reiterate, this is a verbal opinion and statement. It is not contained specifically in the amended resolution. And with that said, we've had a first and a second on the amended resolution. Any more discussion?
No.
With that said, will the clerk please call the roll on the amended ordinance?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes, and this is approving the first reading. The second reading will occur December 17, 2024. Thank you very much, Susan. Moving on to item E, Consent Agenda. All matters under consent agenda are considered to board to be routine and will be enacted by one resolution in the form or forms listed below. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Does any board member wish to remove any item from the consent agenda for discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to remove an item. I just want to point out to everybody, under E-2, where we established our meeting schedule, we are changing our times. So we want to pass that word out to our citizens that we're looking at 2:00 beginning for our regular meetings instead of 3:00, and then for our evening public hearings, those are going to be at 6:00. And that is a change, but I don't want to pull that. And with that, I would move the approval of the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? I will just ask staff, this is the first reading, so we won't notify everybody until after the second reading for the public purposes. Is that correct? No?
No, sir. So this is, with regards to the consent agenda, the resolution establishing the calendar is one reading for the resolution.
Okay. But are we going to take this and put it out to the public? That's what I'm asking. This is fine, but I want to know, are you going to advertise it and how are you going to advertise it for the record?
Yes, we will certainly distribute that in a number of different ways, and I think obviously our website, and then I think some of our most popular items are reserving hearings where we mail invitations to people, and they will, of course, have the updated time as well.
Okay, thank you very much. I just wanted to make sure folks at home understood that, because every, someone might show up one day at 3:00, and we're already done, so. All right, with that said, the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Item F, Citizens' Comments and Communications. Madam Clerk, do you have anything?
Yes, we have two.
If any citizens have submitted a form to speak, read the following. Okay, we appreciate all who've come to address the board today. When your name is called, please come forward and state your name and address prior to sharing your comments. Each person is permitted to speak up to three minutes. At the front of the podium is a light system. With that said, it tells you how much time you have remaining. When the light changes from green to yellow to red, your time is ended. While the board desires to hear from all who desire to speak, we ask that speakers refrain from repeating comments already made by others. With that said, the first speaker today is David Anderson. Would you please come forward and state your name and address for the record? Mr. Anderson here? Second is Linda Oliver. Would you please come forward, Linda, and address the board with your name and your address, please? Thank you.
My name is Linda Oliver, 1672 Mountain Heights Drive, San Antonio, which is Roanoke County.
Can you raise a mic there?
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, I appreciate you taking the time to hear my grievance, but my situation is, my husband died, I'm cleaning out his man cave, I have like 24 brand-new fluorescent-tube light bulbs in the box. I was going to give them away on Facebook, but I learned that they have like mercury vapor gas in them. So I don't want, I don't want, I understand you can't throw them in the garbage. So I called the county to see what they do. They told me to call the transfer station. The transfer station, I think there was a message, maybe not, I don't remember, but they referred me to a website. I had to go to a website where you have to list your name, your address, your phone number, your email, then when you log on and create an account. Then, after you create an account and you go in there, then they send you back to your email to confirm your ticket. And I'm thinking, this is a waste of my time. Normally, anybody else, because most people don't even know they have mercury vapor gas in them, would have just thrown them in the garbage, or I could have given them away to Facebook. But I felt like I was doing the right thing by turning them in environmentally. So I was wondering, do they have, can you just show up, I mean, on the designated time, I went through the whole process and got my ticket, and maybe just show up and present your driver's license? That I have to stand there and input all this information, all this data with all these people stealing your stuff and selling it? It just seems like a lot of waste of my time to just get rid of some light bulb. Seems like there should be a simpler process where I don't have to enter so much personal information just to get rid of some light bulb. I could have just given them away on Facebook and let someone else handle them, but I'm just wondering if there's a better way.
Thank you for your comments.
But in the meantime, I'm just, this is just frustration with, like other things, say, maybe empty cans of paint. And then even with, you know, when you have to recycle, you're shredding stuff. I waited in those lines forever out there in Roanoke and at the Silium Civic Center only to stand there and tell me that that thing is full, have to take all my boxes back home. What am I supposed to do with all my husband's personal bills that he saved and all that other stuff?
Yes, ma'am.
I just have them sitting at home.
Ms. Keane, would you like to come address the question?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for listening to that.
Thank you, Ms. Keane. Get with Ms. Oliver there. Okay. Anyone else desire to speak that hasn't signed up? All right, with that said, thank you. Item G, Reports. Is there a motion to receive and to file the following reports included with the agenda under item G?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes, momentarily, the board will recess to the third floor for the closed session, which, if time permits, will be followed by a brief work session. Item H, Closed Meeting Pursuant to the Code of Virginia as follows. I move to go into closed session pursuant to the Code 2.2-3711, subparagraph 8, Part 5 of the Code of Virginia, for discussion concerning a prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding the facilities in the community. Specifically, the board will discuss potential business location or expansion of the community Kataba, I mean, the Kataba Magistral District. Is there a second?
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Item I, Work Session. Work Session will discuss proposed amendments to Chapter 14 of the County Code on Parades. The board will now recess to the third floor and enter into the closed session first. Thank you.